With that, I'll now call to order the August 9th meeting of the East Penn Board of School Directors. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is requests to address the board. We have quite a number, so I will ask and I will be enforcing the three-minute time limit on speaking. When you start, please announce your name and your address. So the first up is Winn Schuker on online option when child is required to quarantine. Please come up to the microphone up here.
Hi, thank you very much to the board for hearing us. I know this is unpaid positions for you guys. I will not be shouting or anything like that. I just want to ask that if you could please reconsider asking for a mask mandate. I know there is a lot of opposition, people saying that, "Well, you're policing my child. You're muzzling my child." I am not a health expert, but every health expert thing that I have read, and I've been in contact with infectious disease doctors, pulmonary nurses in the ICU, they are saying, and all the literature is saying, that right now, after all the changes of the last four to six weeks, it is no longer the same situation and that we should be having masks on to help prevent the spread of COVID. In addition to that, my main concern is that my child is healthy emotionally, physically. I think the best thing that they can do is to be in school mentally, emotionally, physically. They thrive better in school. Having said that, I think the best way to keep them in school, despite how I feel about, despite the annoyance of masks, is to make sure that they get to stay in school by not having COVID spread. I don't understand what the logistics will be if you have one child who has COVID and you have to shut that class down. What does that mean? If they are in contact with other people, does that mean you're shutting down 20, you know, you're having 20 kids at home? Right now, I know there are no online options also, so that means you're asking students to isolate? When the argument is that you think it's better for kids to be in school, you're asking kids to isolate? I don't think that's great for their mental health either. What happens at the high school level also? When kids are moving from class to class, you're asking for them to shut down, you know, to ask 30-some students to quarantine? And then if they're moving from class to class, does that mean you're asking 180 students to do that? I am asking you to think about the logistics also of what this means to not have a mask. The best way, regardless of how you feel politically, whether it's annoying to you, whether you have the resources to keep your kids at home or not, is still to, I know it's an inconvenience, I know nobody likes it, I know people are saying that, I know people are saying that you're asking, you know, you're telling me what to do with my children. But the fact is, this is the best tool that we have right now to make sure that our kids can stay in school, which I believe is the
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
Thank you. One last thing. I know everybody wants their kids to be in school. The kids want to be in school with their friends, too. If you could kindly reconsider both the health issues and the emotional benefits of having them in school and see this as the best tool that you can use to keep the kids in school, I would appreciate it. One last note. I'm worried about the legality of, or the fiscal stability of our school district. What if a parent comes back to you and says, "You did not do everything that you could for me to ensure that my kids were both safe and got
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to let the next person speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Ella Dozer on masks in school.
My bedness? I didn't break it. Oh, man, I broke it. No, I got you. Sweetheart, can you reach? Say hello.
Hi. I'm Ella Dozer.
She needs her address. You don't need her address.
No, it's fine.
Look at Ms. Camp, okay, don't be nervous.
No.
No, then tell them why, sweetheart.
I don't want to wear a mask in school because it doesn't do anything to help you and it
Get nervous.
Thank you, Ella.
Lead her a little bit because she got nervous.
Why don't you want to wear a mask in school, baby? Go ahead.
Because
Speak up.
Because it doesn't
How do you feel when you wear a mask?
I'm comfortable and nervous.
And nervous, okay. And what happens at school when you wear a mask all day?
I can't really breathe and it's hard to focus.
Okay. And what do you feel about you and wearing masks? Do you think you should have a choice?
Yes.
Do you think everybody should have a choice?
Yes.
And how come?
Because you should, you should have your own choice of what you can, of what you want to do.
Very proud of you. Good job. Say please.
Please.
Please, what do you want to ask me to please what?
Please let us not wear, please let us have masks be optional so we can, so we can all be happy.
Okay. Thank you. Next. Please keep it down. We have many people to get through. Next up is Emily Gissick on health and safety plan.
Hi, thank you. I'm a proud Lincoln parent of a six-year-old and a nine-year-old, and I am a physician, so I am a health expert. I'm urging you to reconsider the optional masking for this year. Last week, Lehigh County required all masks mandatory for government buildings because the transmission level was increased to substantial compared to what it was. And you guys all know that the CDC and AAP just changed their recommendations for universal masking for all staff, students, visitors, for K-12 schools. So why did they change this? Because in the last few weeks, there have been major, major developments. So some of the most recent data. So five good reasons. The Delta variant, which is the predominant variant right now, is more contagious than the others with hospitalization twice as likely for the unvaccinated, our kids. Two, as of last week, 192 children with COVID were admitted to hospitals every day, an increase of 45% from the previous week. Three, mid-July, the U.S. had an 84% increase in new cases in kids in one week, almost 72,000 cases. Four, almost half of the kids who were hospitalized had no known underlying conditions. These were healthy kids. And five, as of Saturday, 33% of kids hospitalized were in the ICU. Almost 600 kids to date have died of COVID. And if anyone has been in the ICU in any children's hospital or in the NICU in any hospital, it's horrifying to see kids ventilated, lines everywhere. It's very traumatic. So as for the mental health concerns, child psychologists who are researching the mental health concerns have resoundingly agreed and are adamant about the fact that the risks of not wearing a mask and a child getting COVID and having to deal with long-term COVID symptoms far outweigh any risks of wearing them. I have pregnant patients pushing in labor and delivery, delivering their babies with masks on. If that's not the ultimate stressor, and they can breathe, and their blood oxygen levels prove that they can. So last spring, our kids went back to school, five days a week, masked the whole time, and they did it, and they did it so successfully. So why not do the same thing that we know that worked in the spring for a variant that is so much more contagious than the ones that we have seen? East Penn last year was the model of safety. I had a ton of parent and Laugh all you want, guys.
Please, please keep it down.
Our cases were
Please show some respect.
Low compared to the others in the district. And I heard from so many parent and teacher patients that their school districts were waiting to hear from ours because you guys were the model. They were all waiting for you to make the decisions because you guys all seem to be making the right decisions in the moment. None of us want high exposure numbers. No one wants classroom shutdowns. So far, when schools have gone back, seven kids get exposed or have COVID and 150 students have to quarantine for two weeks. And without the online option, what are those kids to do? So, you know, parents don't want the sudden shutdowns either. They have to call off from work, they have to find childcare last minute, they have to get remote learning help. That's not good for anyone's mental health. That's not good for anyone's physical health. It disrupts the kid's school. So I'm asking you, it worked last spring. Do the same thing. If the numbers, when the numbers get better, then you can lift it. But let's do what we can in the forefront to prevent everyone's, to prevent everyone's sanity from going crazy and for our health and safety of the kids. Please just reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Jennifer Henry on masks in school.
Good evening, board members in the community. My name is Jennifer Henry and I live in Upper Milford. I have three children in the district, one going into fifth grade at Shoemaker and two going into the high school. I'm also a staff assistant at Lincoln. I'm here tonight to encourage the board to keep masks optional for our students and staff. We are far enough in this pandemic that as parents, we know with our situations what's best for our children. The governor's not mandating masks and there's absolutely no reason for our children to be forced into wearing one. I've seen firsthand in the elementary schools how the masks are affecting our children and the way they learn. They cause anxiety in many children and adults, my children included. Scheduled mask breaks took away so much valuable learning time last year. These children did not get the time they needed to learn. Please, as a parent and an East Penn employee, I'm asking the board to keep masks optional. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next is Anthony Cusimano on social studies curriculum.
Good evening. Anthony Cusimano, I live in McCungee, Wild Shirt, 5031 Valley Stream Lane in McCungee. I come as a concerned taxpayer, not as a parent. I would like to know, I looked on the state guidelines for curriculum and they're very vague and general on social studies. I would like to know if, according to the website, local districts write their own curriculum. Is it possible to see the social studies curriculum for, let's say, ninth grade? Let's start with ninth grade and perhaps a textbook that's used. I would like to have the opportunity to peruse those documents. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cusimano. Next up is Troy Wildison on COVID action and taxpayer, a concerned citizen and taxpayer.
Good evening. I am not a parent in East Penn School District, but I've been an eminence resident for almost 30 years. The problem I'm having right now is it seems like it is now not a COVID issue. It is a propaganda issue. We have a doctor, like Dr. Fauci, one day saying, "We don't need masks. Masks aren't useful." Two days later, we all need a mask. I can vouch before COVID was a household name, I had it. Two days later, retested, I was fine. So my question is, with all these children in school, why do they have to have a mask? I work at a, not a convenience store, but I work in a grocery store, two blocks down the road. And what I hear out of kids to their parents with their mask on is, "Why do I have to wear this mask?" And I've heard a parent one day tell a kid, "Because we were told to." Now, when it comes to the school district, we have a governor for 12 months tell us, "It's for your own good. We'll close up schools." We closed up everything. Businesses suffered, students suffered. And all of a sudden, once his power is taken away, it is, "Oh, well, it's up to the school now. Hmm, interesting." But my philosophy, my question is played simple. Could somebody prove to me how unsafe COVID is to kids when there's no proof? We hear different stories every day, different medical professionals, different political people that have no clue on this subject. So my suggestion or my thought as a taxpayer is the mask should be optional. If we do come down with a case, the child is quarantined until he is clear, or he or she is clear from COVID. So as a taxpayer, and it's going to sound vague, why should I pay taxes if the school can't help these kids by letting them come in optional? And why can't the teachers get a shot? Now we hear that the union is saying teachers should be mandated. That took too long to say that. Teachers should have been mandated immediately. I was mandated on another job. I worked two jobs. And we were practically told we must get the shot, even though it was not in writing. We all got shot. Well, guess what? I got the shot and now I got medical conditions before that, now I got more medical conditions. Do we want our kids to have medical conditions once these shots become available? I'm not worried about myself. I'm almost 50 years old. These kids have got a whole life. If that shot becomes a long-term effect for that kid, they are going to have problems for 40, 50 years, might not even live their life cycle, all over a chemical that's not even approved by the FDA yet. So my option and suggestion is let these kids go to school, mask optional, that's simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cherie Sezak on masks. There's no passing time to other people. You have three minutes. Yeah, Rachel Vermeulen. Okay.
Quickly, we have this petition for mask optional from the community of East Penn School District. Good morning, school board members. Thank you so much for letting me speak here tonight. I am going to be speaking about the Senate hearing that occurred on Friday, August 6, 2021. On Friday, August 6, 2021, the Senate Education Board had a hearing at the State Capitol, which I went to and learned a great deal from the Secretary of Health and Secretary of Education. It's a shame that representatives from school districts weren't there to learn the facts from the sources themselves. The Department of Health Acting Secretary Allison Beam, PA Department of Education Secretary Noah Ortega, and Acting Deputy Secretary from the Office of Elementary and Secretary of Education, Dr. Cherie Smith testified in front of the committee and a pack room of parents and children. During the hearing, Chairman Martin questioned the legal authority of a school district to mandate masks. There is no emergency declaration related to COVID-19 and no current standing related to powers of the Secretary of Health in terms of their ability to issue various medical restrictions. So what constitutional or statutory authority does a school board, local, state government have to impose various restrictions or orders if there is no emergency declaration and no current health order? Where are those powers? I don't see what's being imposed, I don't see how that's being imposed by locals or enforceable. Are they opening themselves up to litigation over not having that authority? And doing our research, I can't find it anywhere. But what's important when talking about people's rights and their kids. Ms. Beam herself even added that we are in a difficult spot. Given the constitutional amendment, it is going to be extremely difficult to move forward with any requirements in a school setting. Although Ms. Beam tried her best to deflect questions and deny having much information, at all, board members also called out the extremely low rate of hospitalization and deaths among children, calling the current recommendations heavy-handed, extreme measures. Several other topics were mentioned, such as ESER funds. Secretary Ortega reiterated several times that schools who choose not to follow CDC recommendations will be at no risk or ramification of litigation. At the closing of the meeting, Senator Martin reiterated, "Who vested school boards' power to make those decisions to begin with? We have to justify the actions taken." I think there is a real gap here from a legal perspective in terms of school boards making decisions. When you talk about liability, actions that are taken by those who are not empowered to make certain decisions can be very problematic. I think a lot of families out there see that as well. I don't know how school boards or their solicitors have analyzed that. It's something that should be on everyone's radar, and it is indeed on our radar. With all these factors in mind, we, the parents, want the authority backed, we want the authority back that was wrongfully taken from us. You no longer have the authority to force masks on healthy children. Children are Americans with rights just as much as we are. In the words of a famous senator, Senator Doug Mastriano, who said it in the state senate meeting, "The parents need to be able to make the choice. They know better than you or anyone else." Thank you for your time and may God bless each one of you.
Thank you. Next up is Cherie Sezak.
Hi, my name is Cherie Sezak. I live at 1168 Morning Star Drive in West Schofield. I have six grandchildren that go to the schools here, Willow Lane, Ire, and then the high school this year. My grandkids were devastated when they couldn't go to school, when they had to stay home and do this online learning. They all had a hard time except for one. Because she's older, she's brighter. The younger kids, they're bright, but they need help. They can't just do this on their own. As a parent and as a grandparent, I don't feel kids should be forced to be vaccinated, number one. Again, something that is not FDA-approved and is only on a basis of it's an emergency. That's not good enough to put this poison in my grandkids. The other thing I wanted to say is please don't let them wear masks. They only have a short time to be kids. Let them be kids. You heard what Rachel said. It is not many kids that are getting it and giving it to everybody. It's no worse than the flu for the kids. Please consider and let them have a kid's life. If they want to wear them, more power to them. No one should say anything if you want to wear them. No one should also say anything if you don't. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Franco Mazeth on mask mandates.
Hi, Franco Mazetti, 2258 Burgundy Drive, McCungee. In response to Dr. Munson's recent public comments largely filled with false premise, opinions as facts and non sequiturs, we're nowhere near the risks of 2020. He cites statistics to support his change of position, which was predicted in the last meeting, but the stats are carefully selected to paint a grim picture. And Florida is not a bellwether for Pennsylvania. These current statistics from Pennsylvania, excuse me, for Pennsylvania from the New York Times tell a different story. PA case rate August 8th was 1,321 in a state of 13 million. That's 0.0101%, or about 1 in 10,000. The PA death rate August 8th is seven. In the peak, in January, it was 222. It's 30 times where we are now. This is not the same thing. The media will have you, and those who regurgitate their talking points, would have you believe the sky is falling again and again. The next variant's right around the corner and it's coming for you. Asking what your threshold tolerance is for hospitalization and death is another non sequitur. According to Senate Education Committee hearing at the State Capitol August 6th, depression, social isolation, and suicide are up thanks to leadership that has everyone looking at each other like they're diseased and going to kill them if they get too close. What's your threshold for teen suicide? We all wish these numbers were zero. Not in studies, but in real-world applications, places with mandates had the worst rates. There's no proof that mask mandates work, no matter how often it's repeated that they do. So-called experts have been wrong at every turn. Our leaders know this, which is why they've all been seen breaking their own rules while telling us what we must do. This weekend, Obama's birthday, another example. The most effective aspect of masking has been turning people against each other and the normalization of imposing one's will on another rather than live and let live. The bigger question I asked the board to ponder is, why are you here? We know it's not the pay. Is it because you care? I'm sure you all do. Is it because it's a resume builder? Probably for some, for power perhaps. Is it because you think you know better than most of the community? There's probably some of that, too. If you're honest with yourself, there's some volus in each of you. You're human, after all. Your duty supersedes these desires, but it's a duty to all and as such, a duty to unite us. Not just the people you politically agree with, but those with whom you don't as well. Especially since some of you cross-filed as Republican and Democrat. Land in the plane momentarily. Especially since some of you cross-filed as Republican and Democrat, including the president of East Penn Democratic Club, Naomi Witch. But what would drive someone in this leadership position to purposely divide people? Dr. Munson claims a desire for district decisions.
I'm sorry, you're introducing new points. You really need to stop. You have three minutes. And I mentioned at the beginning, I'm going to, because of the number of people. So I have to ask you to leave. You're not, you're not finishing up your comments.
Can I finish my last two sentences?
Okay.
Thank you. I'll skip the rest. I asked the superintendent to consider all this when dealing with the board and the decisions at hand. There are many of us who will stand with you to oppose mandatory masking, and if that's what you believe, please stand your ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jason Jenkins on COVID and masks.
Good evening, board members. I hope the past month has been good to you and I do appreciate this three minutes to speak. I suppose if Peyton Manning can do his Hall of Fame speech in under six minutes, I can do everything I can in three minutes, although I can't promise you I'll be anywhere near as eloquent. The past few times I spoke to you guys, I was more emotional, somewhat animated, but that's really not my style. I don't find it very effective, although I think it's interesting that only three of you have masks on, but we'll get to that later. But I think I was able to grab some people's attention and for that, I think it was effective. But the reality is, we're now But the reality is, we're now in a position where we do know our children better than you. And see, this stopped being scientific a long time ago. If you can't see that when our senators have to take their mask off to go into a different chamber of Congress, that this isn't about health anymore, then I think you need to get right with God, because I don't know what would be an overblown pandemic. That's what happens. But see, the thing about propaganda is it's very easy to spot when it's not your generation. When you're going through it, you get inundated with the media and all this agenda stuff. And, you know, we love to go, "Oh, the Germans, how could they?" Well, this is how. This is exactly how. Because they use fear, and it sits on your brain like a fog, and you don't know what to do. And so we turn to our government and we forget who we are. So let's go back to 2019. This board's sitting here, candidate's August 7, 2019, and the village idiot comes into the board with prophecies of doom. For telling the horrors of a pandemic to come, he explains about a virus that went from a bat to an armored armadillo, to now a human, and threatens to kill us all, demanding that all children be required to cover their faces and stay away from each other, close the churches and the bars, hospitals too. But he backs it up with the data. One in 1 million will die from this, one in 1 million children are going to die, and we need to mandate a vax. Well, it's really a gene therapy shot masquerading as a vax that will neither prevent you from getting the virus nor transmitting it. But the village idiot demands that you vote on these measures. How do you think your 2009 self would vote? I'm serious. Is there even one of you that wouldn't have laughed at the village idiot, laughed them out of your presence? Yet here we are. This is no different than my parents' generation ducking under their desks to save them from a nuclear war. It's ridiculous. That's what this is. The virus is less than a micron. Mask won't do a thing for a virus that small.
Please avoid interruption.
And Fauci laughed at all of you when he was asked that question before the pandemic? Of course not. Maybe if you got a spittle, you know? And here we are, a guy, two days ago, on his mask that said all of our kids need to be masked up, and he sits here without a mask on today. That's pathetic. Which is it? What changed? Tell us what changed?
Please keep it down. Please keep it down. We're trying to hear the speaker.
All right, then I want extra time for each one of your interruptions.
Well, you're out. You should wrap up now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I was trying to keep them from interrupting you.
Honestly, but that's where we're at right now. That's what you guys think.
Right up.
And I mean, we're at a place right now where you're going to push for the vaccines, and it don't take much.
I'm serious, you have to wrap up your comments.
What?
It's been more than three minutes.
I highly doubt that. I'm on page two.
I can't, I have to ask you to...
You know what? You guys know the truth. You know the truth about all of this, and you walked out maskless, lying in wait? You should all be embarrassed. Why do you not have your mask on today? What changed? Tell me.
Nothing.
That's right. It's phony. At least you're being honest now.
I'm sorry, can you let someone else speak now?
But just so you know, it's a lie and we can't handle. Okay? That's the bottom line. You have a chance to be a leader here and to take a stand as one of the bigger school districts.
I'm sorry, you have to relinquish the podium. Your time is up. We have several other people that need to speak.
Standing up for our children, I don't mean to be all Saving Private Ryan, but for some of you, it may be one of the most meaningful things you ever do in your life. I ask you to do that. Stand up for our children. Nobody wants this, other than people that regurgitate the first page off of Google.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
And we're done with those people. We're done with college professors like Wolenski and Munson that don't know what they're talking about.
Next up is, next up is Mariska Van Alst on asking about progress on professional development.
Can you hear me through my mask?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So, thank you all so much for your work, and thank you for enduring what can sometimes be pretty trying. I just want you to know that there are, maybe not here, but out in the world, there are plenty of parents that are supporting your work and are really grateful for everything that you've done. So, tonight, I just wanted to talk a little bit about virus. So tonight, we've heard a lot about misinformation about COVID-19, about how masks aren't effective, or how children aren't truly susceptible to the virus, so they shouldn't have to be protected. These are lies, lies that have already cost many lives in our country and around the world. COVID-19 is a dangerous virus. We can learn lessons from our very real, very recent personal experiences and use those lessons to minimize potentially devastating damage going forward. Why wouldn't we want to do that? In many ways, racism is also a virus. It's contagious, it spreads quickly, and if left unchecked, it also takes root in a community and creates long-term damage. We are best served when we use research-based methods to combat it. Yet sadly, just as with COVID, racism is made worse by, and probably even was invented by, the spread of misinformation. In December 2020 and January 2021, a multiracial group of students and parents came before the board with a set of asks that they believed would help improve the climate and open up a dialogue about racial discrimination in East Penn. I spoke at the December 14th board meeting and encouraged the board to listen to these young people and heed their personal experiences of feeling marginalized in our school community. During those board meetings, the students asked for increased training for district staff and for a measurable plan to cultivate a safe environment for teachers to discuss and denounce racism in society, in order to provide a safe and supportive environment for students. Directly after public comment during both of those meetings, board members said the students' words had made an impact, and they promised to make progress on this issue. Thinking about that meeting eight months ago, I come before you to ask where the district stands in this work. Please update the East Penn community on the district's efforts to address racial disparities, additional training, and increased accountability around creating a safe and supportive environment for students, for all students. And finally, regarding both COVID and racism, as we head back into school in just a few short weeks, I ask that school leaders, teachers, and board members, please not let misinformation win. If there were ever a time that we need to be honest with our students and protect those most at risk of the damage of both of these viruses, it is now. Please do not let the shouting and the attempts at intimidation prevent you from doing what you know is right, good, and necessary.
You need to wrap up your comments.
Thank you. We all need you, and we have your backs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Shanta Ford on equity survey, parents of color engagement plan with the district.
Again, my name is Shanta Ford, 5564 Stonecroft Lane, West Schofield. So I, too, was at the December meeting, and so first, before I even posed the question, I just wanted to preface my comments with this, that I'm a parent, and my daughter has been in the East Penn School District from kindergarten to her senior year. She graduated this year. So I'm not speaking from my Facebook tweet, what I've read, or what I've been told. I'm speaking from personal experience, so I think that's important. I also wanted to point out a few things, some obvious, some maybe not so obvious. I am a black woman and a person of color. I'm also a mom, and I have concerns. And my daughter has experienced things in the East Penn School District that she has shared with me, she has shared in school. And so I just wanted to preface what I'm saying with that I'm a real person and that I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone but myself and my daughter. So I wanted to know what was being done or what was the outcome of the equity survey? And will that data be shared? And if it is going to be shared in what form? And are there any actionable items surrounding that? My second question was if there are any plans to engage parents of color in the district. I think, my hope is that we will stop being firemen and addressing fires, and we'll start actually being proactive around equity and not being afraid to say the word racism, and being honest about the experience of the students that are in your care that are of color. I think the kids were really candid with representing their students of color and sharing with you their experiences, and I don't think that should be taken lightly. And I also think that you absolutely owe them a response and action. And I, myself, I said it the last meeting I attended on Zoom, I'm always willing to participate and help in any way I can because I'm invested in change. I want to know that kids are safe and go to school without fear, and that they're being taught the truth. And that's it. One last comment. I would wear a mask for any of you if it kept you alive, just like I wear my glasses when I drive so no one gets hurt. I also pay insurance on my car to make sure that you're covered, and so I would do that.
Please keep your comments down.
So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
You're very welcome.
Next is Jess Penkey on encouragement to listen to PUC and teach curriculum that includes narratives of PUC.
POC, sorry.
Of color.
I figured it out.
Hi. I live in the borough, 227 Burger Street. I am a student of East Penn School District from kindergarten through high school, 2008 graduate, and I have an infant daughter who will be attending school. So I'm here in part to introduce myself as an engaged parent who's excited to be working with all of you and will be attending meetings in the future. This is my first one. But I think that being an active community member is a really important part of good citizenship, and so I'm thankful for this time. I'm here really to support Mariska and Shanta in saying that I would, as an educator, ask you to listen to the students who have come before you, the students of color who have asked for particular things, and to follow up the survey that you did, the equity survey, by making those results public and by demonstrating that they're meaningful to you. Doing a survey isn't enough unless you take the opportunity to learn from it. Additionally, I think it's important that our school board and the district makes a statement regarding both the suit and the curriculum that demonstrates that it values having critical conversations about race. These are not easy conversations to have. It's difficult and complicated teaching and learning, but it's valuable for our students to have. And I think that our educators need your leadership in acknowledging that we do value teaching the truth, and that includes conversations about race. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I believe that's all the comments. Are there any other comments? West for public comment? Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item is approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
So move. Oh, second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the district update. Mrs. Campbell?
Good evening, and as always, I speak on behalf of the board as well as our administration when I say that we sincerely appreciate the feedback and the involvement of our community and care about all perspectives that are shared with us. I want to start off, as I often do, with highlighting a few outstanding accomplishments of individuals and groups in our organization. First, congratulations to the Amayis High School baseball team for being named the Morning Call's 2021 Baseball Team of the Year after they achieved both a league as well as a district title. And in addition, we're very proud of our coaching staff. Jeremy Hawes was named the Morning Call All Area Coach of the Year, and Braden Waller was named Ambassador of the Year. We'd also like to recognize a 2019 EHS grad, Madison Urbano. She was recently selected to the USA Field Hockey Team. Congratulations also to some members of our administrative team. In particular, Dr. Doug Pavolitis is here with us this evening, Dr. Erin Murphy as well. Both have earned their Doctorate of Education degree in the month of July, so it was a busy month for a lot of our leaders for a lot of reasons. We also encourage the community to join our East Penn Education Foundation in supporting STEAM education in the district. In particular, the Education Foundation is sponsoring its first annual golf outing that will be held in October, and so we encourage community members to check out the event. Information is available on our East Penn website and perhaps consider supporting that effort. I'd also like to thank the Carbon Lehigh Special Needs Foundation and the Variety Program, which has provided two East Penn students with a Riften Adaptive Bike through a special program that supports special needs students. And again, we're very proud of the fact that two lucky East Penn students were given that adaptive bike. And to wrap up my updates for this evening, certainly I can appreciate and anticipated that there would be an interest in discussion about our health and safety plan. And I want to start off by saying that, as you can all appreciate, we're continuing our preparations for the start of the school year. That's rapidly approaching. On August 30th, all of our students come back. So I want to start off by saying if there are any families who have not yet registered, and we have a lot of audience members with us tonight, so if you have any neighbors who are new to the district, we hope that you please encourage them to register as soon as possible so that we can finalize our class rosters. In addition, all of our buildings have in-person orientation sessions that are scheduled in August. Many of them begin next week, and so we encourage all families to check out our district, our building websites, to participate in those orientation sessions. And I'm also proud to share that we recognize that many of our students were participating in remote instruction last year, and so there may be students who are new to a building, but not necessarily new to the district. So we have special walkthrough or building tour sessions planned for those students as well. And as I mentioned, as the first day of school rapidly approaches, our families are asking what, if anything, has changed specific to the district's health and safety plan that was approved back at our July meeting. And again, just as many of the comments were surrounding masking, we can appreciate that certainly that's one of the mitigation factors that families are following closely and wondering if anything has changed. Our administrative team recognizes within the past several weeks that, yes, indeed, there are multiple health organizations that have made recommendations on universal masking. We all recognize, it was actually mentioned by several community members this evening, that the CDC has given new evidence and recommends universal masking indoors regardless of status for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to building. We also noted that the CDC highlights that schools may consider universal masking based on local community needs, including community transmission as well as local vaccination coverage. As a reminder for all of our families, as of right now, our health and safety plan indicates that face coverings will be optional for all students and staff, except as required by a state or federal mandate. In addition, our health and safety plan also says that state orders or local data may result in modifications to the district's face covering practices. I'll share that as our administrative team, as of this evening, we have no changes to the practices that are outlined.
Please keep it down.
As of tonight, there are no changes, but I assure the board and the community that our administration continues to carefully monitor those factors in terms of local transmission data. In addition, I'm really proud... Um, in addition, I'm really proud of the fact that our administrative team regularly communicates with Lehigh, Northampton, Montgomery, and Berks County superintendents to discuss our approach as school district leaders to masking. The key factors that we as an East Penn team will consider when making a decision as to require masking at a particular level will be that level of community transmission. I will say that a move to a high level of transmission may prompt a change in our district. Um, we also look carefully at vaccination opportunities for each of our populations, and we are well aware of the fact that currently our elementary students have not had an opportunity to vaccinate. As as you've all recognized tonight, um, the information continues to change rapidly, and we have an obligation to do our best to be responsive to those conditions. We continue, um, again, I appreciate that many of you have come out tonight. I recognize names. I know that you've, some of you have personally reached out as well. We continue to hear from many in the community and respect the viewpoints of all. I urge our community to continue to be engaged in respectful dialogue. And again, just as we've heard tonight, there may be differing views in terms of which mitigation factor should be implemented in East Penn. I know that we're all advocating for the same thing, which is to have our kids back in school. As a parent myself of two children who go to our schools, I completely recognize that sitting here right now tonight, we have a desire to know exactly what August 30th is going to look like for our students. And so I can tell you that I and my team are committed to providing in-person instruction for a full day for all students, and we will update the community when or if there are any changes to the current mitigation practices that are outlined in our health and safety plan. So I share that information tonight, not um, it's truly not foreshadowing of any changes. I just think it's really important that we are transparent with the community. We wanted to give you a very clear understanding of where we are right now, the factors that we're continuing to monitor, and again, just committed to you that if anything changes, we will certainly let you know immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Are there any questions or comments on the district update from the board? Okay, then moving on to uh communities and schools. Dr. Pekaric, are you going to introduce?
Yeah, well, while Dr. Pekaric, I'm going to give her a couple of minutes of transition time, if that's okay. Um, and again, I'm going to also sort of point out the obvious that we're trying out some um updated technology that we're fortunate to have been able to do to the boardroom for members of the community. This screen here is actually so that our board can very clearly see the presentation without having to create this awkward turning behind us. Um, and so again, we're working out some of the technology pieces. We are very fortunate this evening to have several members of our East Penn team as well as communities and schools who will be reporting on the impact of the Communities and Schools program um in our secondary schools. Specifically, when we talk about reporting on the impact, you'll hear tonight that each building, IRE, LMMS, and Emeas High School, has specific goals that have been designed by CIS in collaboration with our building teams. And we're going to share some quantitative and qualitative data in terms of our progress towards those goals. Specifically, Dr. Pekaric and Dr. Mirabella will be representing the district, and we're always very appreciative as well of our CIS partners. Wendy Seifert, um, who's the Associate Vice President of Operations, and Magdalia Garcia, who's the Associate Director of Operations, will be speaking as well from the CIS perspective. Um, again, cannot emphasize enough how very appreciative we are of the partnership with CIS, which has provided a significant level of support for our students and our families um at Emeas High School since 2017, and they've been providing that support at IRE and LMMS since 2019. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Lynn, Dr. Pekaric, and I almost by default started to back up my chair and turn, but I'm not going to.
I was going to say, you did such a wonderful job with the introduction. I can sit down now and we can start the presentation. But I did want to thank you this evening for your time and for the opportunity to present our Communities and Schools update. Um, and as Mrs. Campbell said, as a reminder, we have communities and schools at the secondary level, Emeas High School, IRE, and LMMS. And the coordinators' responsibilities for CIS are primarily to support students outside of what guidance counselors and school psychologists do. So the goal of this presentation is to really give you a high-level update of the school-wide goals, the end-of-the-year data, and the supports and services that we have provided. So I'd like to introduce Magdalia Garcia, who will begin our presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having us once again. It's nice to see your faces in person this time. Um, so I'm Magdalia Garcia, uh, formerly the Program Manager for East Penn School District with Communities and Schools, and I'm now the Associate Director of Operations for CIS. So we have quite a bit of information to share with you, potentially just really the outcomes, and appreciate any questions in between that you may have, and I'll do my best to answer them as we move along. So as a reminder, we do have an individual school support plan for each school. So each school did have their their own goals, particular um specific to what school leadership and the school support teams have um designed with our staff. At Emeas High School, the goals were to increase percentage of students with regular daily attendance from 89% to 92%. The end-of-the-year percentage of the students with regular daily attendance went up to 97.5%. They also had to increase students that received social-emotional learning supports from 1% to 3%. And of that 3% receiving those SEL supports, 15% will include, well, did include students of color. The end-of-the-year percentage of students um with SEL supports was 2.5%. Of the 2.5%, 43 stu, 43% were students of color. To decrease the number of, the third goal was to decrease the number of in-school and out-of-school suspensions by 5% from 561 to 491. The end-of-the-year number of in-school and out-of-school suspensions was only 29. So some of the the information behind the data, we did a comparison with 2018, 2019, 2020, 21 school year. And with the attendance, some of the increased flexibility and learning modules went from, you know, virtual, hybrid, and in-person. We had approximately 70% of the students that were CIS case-managed were fully virtual. There was a significant decrease in numbers of in-school and out-of-school suspensions. Somewhat, we have to credit to COVID. Others, we accredit to the smoking cessation program and other programs that were um conducted throughout the year to support students. So Laura McConji, they had three different goals, to decrease the number of students who received citations for truancy from 24 to 20. This goal was met with the decrease of citations to 17. This goal was changed mid-year with a work with the school support team and school leadership. So it was a behavioral goal, but we decided to move to truancy instead as we continued to monitor throughout the school year. We increased parental engagement participation from three events to five events, and this goal was met with eight family engagement events. We will move on next year to look at the percentage of parents or number of parents that we can engage through programming. We increased the unduplicated number of students who engage in social-emotional activities from 4% to 6% was the goal, and we increased that to 9% engagement. And you can also see there the 2019, 2020, 21 case-managed student progress. At IRE, we had three goals. The percentage of students that receive SEL supports, we hope to increase from 8.9% to 15 by the end of the school year. The percentage of students that received basic needs will increase from 2.9% to 4.5% by the end of the school year. These goals were met. CIS will increase parental engagement community resources from 18.89%, 164 parents, to 20%, which was 177 parents. These goals were also met. The case-managed progress, again, is there comparable from 2019, 20 to 2021. The next three slides, you're going to see the basic demographics for our case-managed students. So this number does vary from school to school, um, particularly for different reasons of referral at each school. So we do have a comparison here for total referrals for Emeas from 2017, 18, all the way to 2020, 21. Particularly, we like to focus on regular um education, learning supports, and emotional support students. This helps us determine whether a student is moderate intensity or high intensity, so whether they need basic supports or they might need increased supports per student. LMMS has information from 2019, 2021. So we did increase referrals, and the number of case-managed students was slightly lowered. However, the number of, the amount of intensity for those students did increase. So although there were fewer number of case-managed students, there were a higher number of supports provided to each one of those students. And we have the same demographics provided for IRE Middle School as well, which total referrals were up to 79 with 61 case-managed students. Are there any questions thus far?
Any questions in the board?
So there are.
Please continue.
There are several East Penn um existing supports already. So we have SAP team, uh, truancy, and MST teams, lunch groups with school counselors, psychological counseling for students with disabilities, the Mental Health Symposium, which was a great success again this year. IRE school psychologist ratio, LMMS, and uh, Emeas High School are listed there. They also have the counselor ratio listed for your information as well. So all of our sites work with particular providers and agencies that we partner with to either provide groups, individual services for our students, um, or just to do tier-one services, which are school-wide services as well. So we listed some of those partners and providers here for for you. Particularly for Emeas High School, there were several tier-one supports with 17 case-managed students that attended this, I'm sorry, there's 17 um who were case-managed that attended these particular supports, but the supports were school-wide. So there's quite a list there. Tier two, we had nine case-managed students that attended nine tier twos. Um, so those were groups for our students or particular uh supports that were geared for our case-managed students, and we have the number of students that participated in those. Then the total caseload was 67 students who received individual supports at the school. For LMMS, we had several tier-one program, and as we had mentioned, there were some very uh particular programs geared towards parent engagement. For our tier twos, there were a couple of groups that were really focused on social-emotional learning for our students as well. And there were 27 total case-managed students. At IRE, we also had plenty of tier ones, so school-wide programming. 52 students uh were participating in tier twos, and there were 61 case-managed students at IRE. There were additional supports that were provided this year. They were including just parent contact, keeping in contact with our parents on a regular basis, as frequently as we could, student check-ins that occurred frequently as well, so not just the one-on-one time where it was more so 30 minutes or more, but just a basic check-in sometimes so that the students knew that there was a caring adult available for them. Our case-managed, I'm sorry, site coordinators this year did go out to some home visits as well to encourage students to come to school or to provide basic needs to parents in the home. We had parent-teacher conferences continue as well, basic need supports. If you're aware, LMMS and IRE did a basic needs drive and supported several families in that. And there are individual student supports, of course, are tier threes, are one-on-ones with students. I will pass it off to Linda. Sorry, Dr. Pekaric.
So as you know, next year is the um last year of the Challenge Schools Grant, and so we wanted to get staff perception at the middle level regarding the services. So we developed a survey, and this first slide depicts that 100% of the teachers have knowledge that the students were receiving services or participating in group support. Now, why is this not moving for me? Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next slide depicts that 94% of teachers were aware that CIS assisted with intervention when a student was in crisis. And the next slide depicts that 93% of teaching staff have personal observations of CIS coordinators being present in the building. The next slide depicts that 82.4% of teaching staff have a personal understanding of the CIS programming. And this slide shows that 79% of teachers have experience with the CIS coordinator assisting students with academical, sorry, academic and functional performance. And this last chart shows that 82.4% of teaching staff have a personal understanding of the CIS programming. And this final slide shows highlights of anecdotal comments from staff, and we really, there were a lot of comments, we just highlighted a few of them, and overall, the comments were very, very positive. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Mirabella.
Thank you, and thank you, and good evening. On slide 21, I just want to point out a couple of things. The counselors, psychologists, and CIS continue to regularly review the data and trends at EPSD and nationally to implement programs and resources accordingly. And in reviewing the 1819 and the 1920 data from this slide, we continue to meet the changing needs by providing resources for students and families, building strong relationships, teaching coping and resilience skills through individual and group program offerings provided through collaboration efforts between the school counselors, school psychologists, and their CIS colleagues. Slide 22 talks about, um, I very much like to have you keep in mind that 70% of the high school students population participated in a blended, a blend of virtual and hybrid learning for a significant portion of the year. The data does not completely reflect the totality of interactions as the system that was in place was designed to track through physical sign-ins at, in the guidance counselor's office through a, through an iPad. So we did not capture all of the times CIS or a counselor or a school psychologist worked with a student that was in the virtual environment. It's important to note that students reported not being able to talk freely with staff due to other family members being home and a perceived lack of privacy when they were talking about some of the subjects that they would address with the, either the school psychologist or the CIS members. While this year was extraordinarily unique and challenging, staff worked together to identify ways to connect with all students through virtual programs and offerings. Those additional resources and programs that we put into place helped students that would not have been reached under these unique circumstances. And to give you a few examples were the advisory period videos, the Wellness Wednesday website programs, and the HOPE program were implemented for the entire student body. CIS played a large part in the delivery of all those programs. Even though stress and anxiety continued to play a factor in student performance, students reported feeling comforted by being regularly presented with the resources available to them and knowing how to access and support those services. They also benefited knowing where to direct their friends if their friends were struggling. It can be concluded that students were benefiting from utilizing the supports in place that were not necessarily captured through these data points. Regarding the middle level in slide 23, in the 1920 data, which was the first year of CIS implementation at the middle level, data was collected prior to the pandemic in a traditional school year setting. The data, the data was only reported until the pandemic began in March of 2020. According to the 1920 data, anxiety in peer conflict ranked the highest with mental health concerns. Even though not reflected by the data, we noted students experienced increased levels of anxiety and depression. of anxiety and depression during the pandemic. Counselors and psychologists with the support of CIS workers together worked continuously to develop and reinvent current programs and supports to meet the ever-changing emotional, educational, and social needs of the students and their families during this unique pandemic time. And on slide 24, we are again reminded that the data presented here is not a full representation of what our students were experiencing. The district mental health and supports continuously worked together to develop programming and supports to meet the ever-changing needs of the students. CIS played a major role in the collaborative effort to support students' needs during the pandemic.
I'm Wendy Seifert. I'm the Associate Vice President of Operations for Communities and Schools, representing the agency this evening. We were able to increase our services in LMMS and IRE in the 2019, '20 school year because of a grant from our national organization. We refer to it as the Challenge School Grant. It was an opportunity for us to grow our services in the country. CIS locally was afforded an opportunity to grow those supports, and East Penn stepped up and said they wanted the supports in their middle schools. So that was the opportunity, the impetus to bring us to IRE and LMMS. It is a three-year grant. We just ended our second year, and we are in our third year. So we will be looking to, you know, determine how we can sustain the services that we feel are impacting and helping your students and families. And just from the point of view of the financial piece of it, the support that came from our national organization was about $192,000. So those things will have to be determined as we go for budget revisions and looking for additional opportunities on our part to maintain the services that we think are so boldly needed. The only other thing I will say is that those, that grant was really determined to identify a particular need at IRE and LMMS, and their primary focus was school climate. If attendance is a potential need in the 21, '22 school year, we have the opportunity to address those needs. The beauty of our model is that we do an assessment every year to determine what those needs are, and we can monitor and adjust as we go. So we feel our model can respond to what your school's needs are in the upcoming year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? On Dr. Levinson?
Good evening. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's always nice to get a summary of, you know, a program that clearly does have an impact on the students in our district. I do have three questions, and it's actually for both the administration and members of CIS. My first question is, I'd like to know what the administration's point of view is on the degree of success of the CIS in all three of the schools, in addition to whether, you know, we see that there are potential areas of improvement and what we can do, you know, for the next school year.
So I'm sorry, I heard the first part of your question.
Sure, sure.
So, go ahead.
I'll just repeat what I said. Is that, you know, I'd like to understand what the district's point of view is on assessing the program. What's the degree of success that you feel is being achieved in each of the schools? And are there any identified areas of improvement that we think that we can move forward with for the 21, '22 year?
So from my perspective and looking at the data, when we first started collecting data on anxiety, depression, suicide, we had very high rates. And so since CIS has been in our schools, we've been able to provide that support upfront. And so we've kind of mitigated that high level of need. So we have less students going into the hospital and being hospitalized and then needing treatment afterwards than in years prior. And I really do credit that too. We have supports in place upfront, students are taking advantage of it. We also have CIS participating in our mental health symposium, and we have a lot of constituents in the community that present. And so there is a higher level of awareness. CIS really helps connect parents with supports. And so although it may not be a direct support, we've had a few cases where students were homeless. And so CIS connected them to those agencies, connected them to food banks for food, places to get clothing, and support. So I believe it's a very valuable service.
Okay. And I guess my, the second part of my question was, is there, are there opportunities to expand and improve for the forthcoming school year?
So I think, you know, just looking at the social, emotional piece of how students will be coming, you know, back to school, I think we'll augment supports and groups and look at what the needs are and the way students are presenting. And so that's kind of, we take a pulse on, you know, how are students presenting and what are the needs, and then we develop supports from there. And so we will continue to do that. We also do a survey in each school to identify the needs and set those goals. And then we meet as a team to review that data, develop the goals. And those really are fluid. So if we set a goal and see a need in the future, we will change that goal or put in additional supports.
Okay, thank you. So my next question, and I know Dr. Mirabella commented on this to a certain extent. So the pandemic obviously had had a profound impact on the operations of the CIS program in each of the schools. I'm curious if you can comment further on what impact this had on the data that's been collected, and hence how we can, you know, see into what we did this year and again, look at it as a success. You know, it is nice that we can be quantitative in a lot of ways to understand what's going on, but obviously, last year was an irregular year. I just want to make, I want to understand if there are things that we are potentially missing and what's being reflected in the data.
I would say I think the biggest part that was missing was our ability to capture the different times that students were reaching out to CIS, because the way we track it typically was through an iPad. Student would come in, enter information on an iPad, and it would then be able to be tracked, and it would go right into our charting. But we didn't have that ability in March when the pandemic started. And then in the high school, our numbers weren't truly reflective because 70% of our student population participated in some type of blended learning. So should we have an experience like that again, we will have another method in place to be able to capture those students that reach out in the virtual world and not only in the in-person world.
Okay. Is there a sense that the numbers were, that reflected in the graphs are larger than? Because there have been things that weren't captured?
I believe that, yes, some of the interactions, we can just tell from some of the discussions we had, et cetera, we were only pulling the data that was real, that was recorded.
Okay.
But we do know for a fact, the many times students, just by the amount of service and opportunities that we responded to help the students, we know that all of that wasn't available to be tracked and documented.
Okay, thank you. And my third and final question is, you know, I was grateful that you included and incorporated feedback from the survey. You know, I think it's great that these, the staff, or the teachers and staff, you know, find value in CIS, and the positive comments are very reassuring that it's making an impact. I'm just curious if the survey may have identified some constructive criticisms for the program, and maybe if you can share some of those comments.
Actually, all of the comments were very positive, so we received no negative comment. I would say, you know, what my takeaway from the survey was, I would like to see 100% of everything, and so we have to maybe do a better job at promoting CIS services in schools and promoting awareness of services. So, I mean, that was my takeaway. But overall, everyone that answered the survey, it was all positive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess my final point is, you know, in my opinion, I think we're seeing great value with the CIS program. You know, it is unfortunate that we're in the final year of the Challenge Grant, and I do hope that there may be some additional funding there so that we could, you know, take some of the financial burden off the district, and we can do, you know, put effort into finding that. Because I know, you know, we're also contemplating potentially moving into the elementary schools and, you know, while these, I know, I really think these services are valuable, but we do have to find a way to.
I agree. We're going to start working on that right away, so I.
All right. Again, thank you, thank you for the presentation.
I know what you mean.
Other questions? Ms. Bowman?
You had Dr. Munson first, I'll go after him.
Okay, Dr. Munson?
I'm trying to balance out the sides. I did see him before.
Oh, he had just raised his hand way before I did.
You've messed with his mojo now.
Dr. Munson?
Thanks. Thank you for this. You know, every time we've seen these presentations, my understanding of the, both the depth and the breadth of the need in the district increases, and so I appreciate that. And the presentations have also really demonstrated a strong model for handling these things. And so I appreciate your presentation, and I appreciate the data that you brought. I also appreciate that the data is incomplete because of what happened last year. My question actually speaks to these issues of data and so forth. I mean, on the slide that you have up right now, you know, one thing that's listed there is increased student success. And, you know, it seems to me that most of the goals that were identified for this last year were not measures of student success, they were measures of things that we think contribute to student success, like regular attendance and strong mental health and other things. Do, do you, is there any data, or are you attempting to collect any data directly on student success? By which I mean, well, you can tell me what that would look like. I mean, off the top of my head, it seems like it should have something to do with grades or graduation rates, or, you know, jobs after graduation, or post-secondary education after graduation, and things like that, either sort of before and after, or sort of compared to the population, you know, as a whole that CIS targets? What kind of data do we have on that these goals translate into student success?
So I can tell you, when we choose the school-wide goals, let's say we'll focus on attendance. So when you have attendance issues, there's some other thing that's comorbid to that attendance and why that student isn't attending school. And so, you know, we kind of reach out to the family, we drill down and see what's happening so that we can get that student services. And so, you know, once students get services, they're coming to school, then it, they graduate, we increase grades, we increase attendance. So, you know, that's kind of the platform and how we look at it. When you look at, at the high school, we had lower suspension rates by a great deal, and part of that was COVID. But the other part was, we put the smoking cessation program in place. So instead of having kids, you know, go out for a day because they were caught with whatever, they signed up for this program, and they weren't suspended. And so you're addressing the need, it's not punitive, you're addressing the problem.
So I guess my question is more, I didn't mean to question whether or not those were valid goals, and what you say sounds right to me. Well, I guess my question is, do you have data to show that the increased attendance of communities and schools affiliated students has led to better grades and so forth?
It's actually on this.
Go back.
Sorry, I'm gonna, don't get sick with the. Yeah, so, sorry. So if you look at this, two, three, slides two, three, and four, the case-managed student progress is listed below. So the outcomes and the data for the case-managed students who had goals related to attendance behavior and academics are on those slides.
I see. Okay, so, I'm sorry.
No, so that's where you could, and it's on each slide for each site.
Okay, so the kinds of examples that I was giving would be classified under academic in this?
Yep, any student who has an academic goal. Again, all of our students don't have every goal. Our students are, we meet them where they are and assess their needs and set goals that are appropriate for them. So of the students who had academic goals, at EMAIS High School, 75% of them met their goal or made progress towards their goal. Our three primary areas of measurement are in attendance behavior and academics. We could get you the graduation numbers. I don't know if we have post, we should have post-secondary information, we could pull at least about post-secondary plans.
So can you give just some examples of what an individual student's academic goal might be? Maybe a couple of examples, or an example of a pretty small incremental one, and perhaps an example of a more ambitious one?
Sure. So for an academic goal, depending on the school, a high school academic goal would likely revolve around earning credits towards graduation. So increasing, if a student is overage and under credit, that might be a primary goal so the student can earn the credit they need to get to graduation on time. It could also be something related to a core subject. If a student is struggling in one core subject area, for example, if they're failing math. Our goals and targets are based on where they start and where we want them to go to, and we're looking for a minimum of a half of a letter grade improvement to a full letter grade improvement, understanding that, you know, we're not setting goals for a student to get from a D to an A. We really need to set those goals with the student in mind, and understanding what his or her abilities are. So they are specific to the student who we case manage.
Great, thank you. Actually, those are really useful examples. So just to be sure I'm clear about this, so if a student was missing a lot of math, and so their goal was they would miss less math, or they'd miss less than so many days of math, that wouldn't be listed as an academic goal, that would be an attendance goal?
Attendance is based on school day attendance, so, and academic goals are typically around grades or credit acquisition.
Okay, great. Well, as I said, I appreciate this, and, you know, one of the things, your answers to my questions were helpful in me understanding is how much more data is behind some of these slides. And so, like Dr. Levinson, I do hope that we find ways to integrate CIS even further into our schools and our programs, as I think it's sort of undeniable that we have needs that aren't being met, and so we need more. Thank you.
Ms. Bowman?
Yes, thank you. I just had some, a question about tier one, which I, my understanding is that's the tier where you're looking at school-wide changes. And I'm sorry, I forget which slide it was, but it had 17 students, and I didn't, I wasn't really sure how it could be a school-wide effort if only 17 students were involved.
Slide 10.
That number, excuse me, sorry. That number are 17 case-managed students. So the overall number of students that may have been attending one of those was not necessarily included in the slide. We can definitely get that number to look at how many students may have attended overall some of those, some of those programming. For instance, virtual calming room, there were over 300 students, or 300 persons that logged into the virtual calming room, but we're not able to differentiate those between some of the teachers because it was also available for, for school personnel as well as the students. I actually think the number is more than that. But altogether, collectively, I believe that majority of these, collectively, again, would have reached the entire school population, so including all of them together. But some of those programs did reach the majority of the school, and some of them only reached those case-managed students. So particularly, we want to make sure our case-managed students are getting tier ones, twos, and threes. So that's why we included that particular number.
Okay, so that would probably apply to tier two as well, that the nine is only for your case-managed students, but that tier actually reached more people than that?
Yes, like you'll see, attendance awareness campaign with 67 students have participated in that particular tier two.
Okay. And can you tell me what the virtual calming room is?
If Amy were here, she would definitely provide that, and I could, I could provide the link when we get back, because it really is just a virtual room that might provide different calming strategies for students and our teachers. So if they're having some social anxiety, there may be some links there that will provide them calming strategies for anxiety particular. Or if they're having an episode of depression, they just want to not necessarily speak to a person, but there might be other methods there to work through that. There are also, we're also working on being able to include resources on the virtual calming room as well for those individuals that don't want to necessarily reach.
want to necessarily reach out to someone at the school.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and I have some questions about how you're collecting or what data you're collecting to show what goals are reached. Um, I, I had sent some questions ahead of time and didn't really get answers that were, um, particularly helpful. So it seems like at the high school, the goal is attendance, um, but then we're not tracking truancy, for example, which is part of attendance. And I, I didn't really understand why we weren't looking at how many kids were referred to truancy court, for example, to see if that's going down because of the program. Um, and also like, I, I can see how the program is, um, affecting the students who are case-managed, but not the population as a whole. Um, I would like to know how our attendance as the whole school population is doing. So are we doing better? Are we doing worse? I understand this past year is going to be an anomaly. But, um, you know, in a year when we're deciding whether to spend more on this program, um, I think as a board, we need to look at, at attendance as a whole, or when you, I think it was IRE that had school climate. Um, you know, I need a, a, some piece of data that helps me know if the climate in that school as a whole is getting better, um, not just for the case-managed students. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Yeah. So I'll just interject. So this upcoming school year, you know, that we will have Panorama as one of our platforms. And so within that platform, we will be able to track all of that information. So it'll make it a little bit easier moving forward.
Okay.
To secure that information.
So we'll have a baseline by the end of this school year, but we won't have anything to compare it to when we're evaluating the program.
Well, I mean, I think if we really wanted to do that, which I think we will have to, um, to prove the efficacy, um, we will be kind of drilling down to that level.
Um, thank you. I, I have a few more there, just like really quick questions. You had mentioned that, um, hospitalization or partial hospitalizations were going down and, um, that wasn't included in the slides. And I would just love to see that data to, like, is it going down for the high school and both the middle schools or just one? Um, and then, um, my next question is more about awareness. You had talked about awareness of staff, awareness of students, where I think, um, the group of people that is particularly unaware of this program is parents. Um, you know, I would, uh, over the past year occasionally talk to someone whose child is failing every single class and is referred to truancy court at that point and ask if their child is in the communities and schools program. And the parent wouldn't even know what the program is. And it seems to me like when a, when a student is at that place, they're failing everything and they've been referred to court, somebody should have recommended communities and schools long before that point. And so I'm wondering if, um, we can look at the system to figure out how we can intervene much earlier, especially at the high school where attendance is one of our goals, so that we're catching students long before they're being referred, they have a court date.
I know at the open houses, and I know last year, you know, was very different and things were virtual. But CIS does, um, present or has a table at, at those venues, so to speak. So that's kind of how we spread, spread the word. But, um, we can certainly look at that, um, and provide more parent awareness.
So otherwise, how does a student get involved in communities and schools? Does, um, do they have to ask for it or do they, are they referred to?
So there's a referral system. So either the principal, the guidance counselor, or the school psychologist, sometimes a teacher who notices something, or if a student says something or is in crisis, um, goes to the psychologist or guidance counselor and then that referral is made.
Okay. I, I think what I am suggesting is that especially, it looked like we're not at the, um, there's not a backlist right now at the high school. If I remember, uh, one of this, there's some room in the, the person's schedule that we could look and find a way to systematically catch students earlier. It seems like especially this past year, a lot of students fell through the cracks. Um, I understand why that might have happened. Um, but I also think maybe we can create some safeguards in the system to, um, refer people earlier and make sure that we're not, um, waiting too long to get students involved.
We, we certainly can look at that. We meet, um, monthly, Dr. Mirabella and I with each school team, and we discuss caseloads and student needs, school needs. So we will certainly keep that at the forefront. And if referrals are low, um, you know, that's an indication to then, you know, meet with the core team that would make that referral. So thank you for that suggestion.
Well, thank you. That's all I have.
I, I just also have, um, I'll say maybe a follow-up reflection or think aloud. Um, and I appreciate your, um, what I look as, as the overarching feedback in terms of how can we continue to communicate with our families that CIS is a resource, they are a partner with our school community and they are a resource there for kids first and foremost, and oftentimes really sort of supporting the whole family as well. Um, so certainly communication is something we can continue to work on. I did just want to clarify as well, and again, depending on, um, the needs that the student may demonstrate in terms of academics, like course failures, um, and/or attendance, I, I did just want to clarify that, um, at any level, we, we, the schools do not go directly to issuing citations. Um, you know, certainly that, that is, I'm going to say a punitive approach and not one that any of our, our school teams prefer to take. Um, somewhat reactive, not preventive in terms of trying to get to the root of the, of the situation and really help the student have regular attendance in school. Um, and, and Dr. Mirabella, I'm going to look to you. So correct me if I'm wrong here, but the school code actually speaks to the fact that we must have a school attendance improvement con- conference, a SAIC meeting. I think I got that acronym right. Um, and so I just want to sort of clarify for the community that there are, there are steps that our school teams are obligated and do take before we go to that issuing a true, a citation piece. Um, but again, I appreciate the fact that you really brought it up as an example. Not necessarily that's always what happens, but, um, you know, wanted to just emphasize that there are some steps involved there.
Multiple steps, multiple layers, including personal invitation for the parent to come in and join or join via Zoom to have that conference, to develop an attendance plan long before it ever gets through a citation.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mr. Champagne?
Yes. Thank you very much. This has been very helpful. A couple of questions. Since this was the first time the program was at the middle school, now we're having, you know, some of those students transitioned to the high school. Will those students be referred to the high school under CIS? Will they have to re-engage? Or how is that going to be handled? And so that we don't want to overload the high school counselors, but also ensure that nobody kind of slips in the crack here is, is what is typically been a very interesting time for students when they go from eighth grade to ninth grade.
So if they're receiving supports at the middle level, though, they'll remain on the caseload. So they'll be transferred to, um, the caseload at Emais.
Okay. And then what else are you doing in, you know, as we kind of transition back to in-person learning and anticipating what could be a very difficult start to the, to the school year with kids, you know, coming in who have had some issues with the remote programs, have had other issues? How are we kind of ramping up to engage or making sure that we're ready to maybe here, have a, an onslaught of, of kids who can't all be in case-managed situations? So what, in addition to the tier one kind of stuff that you've shown or the tier two things, what other things are you taking steps to kind of plan for what could be, like I said, a very difficult period?
So it really is developing those tier two supports and putting those groups, um, in place ahead of time. So addressing, you know, students that have, may have anxiety issues. And so being proactive and developing the, the resources, if it, if it means bringing in an agency to address that need. Um, I know, correct me if I'm wrong, they're all working on, uh, developing those supports. So we have had meetings throughout the summer. We've talked about that need greatly. Um, you know, students coming in may have social, emotional, learning needs.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Bird?
Yes. I just have a couple of questions. One of them referred, in your data, you show that some students are, are, they refuse services. I just want to know what happens to those students and how you address that.
So when students refuse the services from CIS, we still know that there's a need and we still put supports in place. So whether that's through the guidance counselor, a school psychologist, um, they don't just drop off the radar. And so we're constantly working with parents and working with students. And they can participate in any tier one or tier two group.
It can also be part of the SAP process if they don't want to be receiving services from CIS. The student assistance program, which is an inter-run training program within the school, students can get referred, anyone can refer a student or assistance through the SAP program as well.
I have one other question. Another question is, uh, you talked about basic needs that you supply to our students. Uh, basically, could you expound on what those basic needs are and how you see that trend going? How does it help in achieving the goals that you talked about up there?
Do you want to take this?
I can take it from that, from, from the partnerships that we've been doing. Um, food, clothing and shed, food, clothing and shelter. It's not just something we say. We've done all three. We actually have clothing, um, areas in each one of the schools where the students can go privately and select things that they may need. Um, they're either donated. A lot of times they're new. We also do gift cards. We do food gift cards. We do food each week. Uh, individuals can come, uh, to two different site locations and pick up, uh, non-perishable items. And we've also done an expanded program as far as providing some fresh foods through a partnership with, uh, Second Harvest Food Bank and several other places.
Good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Winch?
I just want to say, I am so thankful for, um, this amazing program that I hope continues to expand, um, throughout the years. And I'm very thankful to see some, um, demographic information that I asked for last time. I think that's really important that we're getting to the core group of folks that might need it most. Um, I do just have a quick question, uh, about, um, the, the truancy issue and I, or maybe it's even a suggestion or ask if this might be a possibility. Um, a lot of times truancy or attendance issues is, is a symptom of a major problem in a child's life. And, um, and our parents don't tend to know about CIS. Is it possible to include some information in the truancy letters, which I do understand are state mandated and worded and, but maybe a small little brochure that says, if your child is struggling, there might be options for him. Because that's when they need to see that. It's not necessarily an open house night where they might forget about it. It's just a suggestion. It may or may not become a fruition or an ability, but it's a suggestion. Thank you for all you do.
We appreciate that. And, you know, just so that you know, during those SAIC meetings, we put supports in place in that plan. And so it might be a referral to CIS at that point in time. So.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I would just like to echo, uh, some of the other board members. Thanks for the program. It looks like this is a variable, very valuable program that's meeting a definite need in the district. So I hope we can continue it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to personnel, uh, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, items, well, all the items, uh, one through 21, uh, including the addendum to the, of Laura Conway to the per diem substitute list.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jankowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion passes. And I think Ms. Campbell has some comments?
Yeah. In the, yes, in the personnel item that the board just approved, I just wanted to take a moment, um, first to recognize, um, the resignation of Dr. Mike Kelly, who has been, uh, with our East Penn team for 10 years, eight of which he served as the principal at IRE Middle School. And certainly, um, we will miss his leadership at IRE and as part of our administrative team and wish him continued success as he takes on a central office administration position in the Fleetwood Area School District. Um, so certainly, um, again, congratulations to Dr. Kelly. We're proud of him. Um, and we'll, and we'll miss him as part of our team. In addition, um, I'm thrilled to be able to welcome Dr. Tricia Gutman, um, who is certainly a very familiar name and face to our organization. Um, Tricia has actually been with us for 23 years as an elementary teacher, um, at McConaughey Elementary. And most recently, she served as, um, a coordinator of our academic support program, which services students in kindergarten through eighth grade. Um, and so she has been, um, certainly working alongside our teachers and building leaders for many years, um, as well as supporting our ESL program, um, throughout the district. And so really, this is a change in position in that we are, um, able to make her position an administrative position. So as is typical, we always introduce our new administrative candidates. And so it's like a reintroduction of Dr. Gutman. Um, and typically, we would come up and do handshakes, but certainly, um, I just wanted to take a moment and congratulate her and officially welcome her as a member of our administrative team.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to business, uh, operations. If there are no objections, I'd, I'll entertain a motions through, for items A through E taken together?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Levinson?
I'd just like to call attention to, uh, item D, which recognizes a donation from the, uh, East Penn, uh, Education Foundation. Um, I'm, I'm the school board rep for that, for the, uh, the board of the foundation. And on behalf of the foundation, I'd just like to again convey, uh, the foundation's enthusiasm for this new program. Uh, grateful for the work that the administration has done for, for, for finding this. And we're really looking forward to having these dogs as part of our community and all that they're going to do for our students. And then now as in my capacity as a school board member, I would now also like to thank the Education Foundation for its financial support to get this program off the ground.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just, sorry. I was, I would just reiterate our, our administrative team's appreciation for the foundation and their continued support of, um, STEAM education as well as many other creative programs.
My comment is just, thank you.
Yes. Thank you also. Mr. Champagne?
Yes. I just, if somebody could maybe, uh, give me a little more background on the Vanguard School of Learning for Life contract and exactly how many students are involved in that agreement? And what is the, the need for this agreement?
It's a specialized educational program, I believe, for one.
It is, for, for one student. And so I would say, I want to go back seven years and we did have one other student at this particular school. It's an approved private school. It's a 60-40 placement. And so the state pays 60%. We pay 40. Um, however, there is a waiting list. Um, so it typically takes about three to six months.
Okay.
But it's a very specialized school for a student.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jankowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion's pass. I'll now entertain a motion for, uh, school crossing guards, item F.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Munson?
Yeah. I guess I, I have a question about how this will impact crossing guards in places other than Lower McConaughey Township.
Mr. Fisher, I don't know if you have a, a legal opinion, but, um, my response to the question would be that this is specific to, um, guards in Lower McConaughey Township and, and in and of itself wouldn't have an impact on those other municipalities.
I share that opinion.
Okay. So, so adopting this tonight doesn't, um, set in motion, um, the need of the district to, to treat crossing guards for different schools differently across the district?
It does not. I will share, we don't currently employ, um, the, the way in which crossing guards are handled, for example, in Emais. for example, in Emaus is through the Burrows Volunteer Program.
And if we, and I think this is actually a legal question. So if we adopt this motion, could, once we were, had hiring and oversight of school crossing guards at Willow, could we also mirror that program that's in Emaus? Or are we prohibited from having a volunteer program by the, by the statute of, you know, the differences between townships and boroughs and so forth?
That's actually correct. So again, this is just sets in motion the possibility of Lower McConaughey Township than adopting an ordinance, which would allow the school district to assume oversight and hiring. Does it, in and of itself, right now, this doesn't financially obligate the school district for anything right now. This just sets in motion Lower McConaughey Township to consider the possibility of adopting an ordinance.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I hadn't actually, I don't know if I fully recognized the import of, of this resolution. Actually, maybe, maybe, maybe now I'm overstating the import of this resolution. I'm, I'm happy to, to do that, but I don't want, I don't want to pass something that prejudices the board's ability to set policy that will treat all crossing guards equally across the district. And I think that that's an important principle, even if it hasn't been followed in the past for one reason or another. And it's, what I'm hearing from you is that passing this in no way changes the board's ability to do that in the future.
All this does is inform Lower McConaughey Township that we would like, that the East Penn School District would like to assume the hiring and oversight. That's all it does.
Okay.
Right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowman?
I, I guess this is also a legal question. If we don't do this, does that mean Lower McConaughey has to keep the hiring and oversight? Or does it mean that it goes into like a abyss where nobody has hiring and oversight?
Well, the answer is that Lower McConaughey has indicated that they do not want to, no longer, and in fact, has taken action to no longer assume the hiring and, and the oversight of school crossing guards. So therefore, there would be none.
Right. So then it would, nobody would have hiring and oversight. Is that correct?
Lower McConaughey. That's correct. They were.
Well, it would be their responsibility if they wouldn't, wouldn't be doing it. They have the option not to do it.
Absolutely. And that's the option they've exercised.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Other questions? Well, I have a few comments. From a conceptual place, I think it's the township's responsibility to do this. I'm a resident of Lower McConaughey Township, and I live in one of the neighborhoods that will be impacted from this. And I, their action tells me that they don't believe their residents want this or pay for it, and I don't think that's the case. But regardless, if they're telling us that their residents don't want this and don't want to pay for it, I have a hard time saying, well, the school district's going to subsidize it with taxes collected from other communities. So I can't, I, I know this is sort of an issue that the, you know, the administration sees a need and wants to solve the need, but I can't justify voting for this motion. So I'm against this motion. Any other comments? Dr. Munson?
Yes, I mean, I guess I'm influenced by, by your comments. And so I'm, so you seem to be reading this in a different way. And so is it, is it your sense then that by passing this, we've sort of set in motion having taxpayers and other, and other parts of the district subsidize Lower McConaughey Township's crossing guards?
I think if we want to carry on, the people that are, I mean, we could try to develop a volunteer corps, as other townships do, but I sort of view it as Lower McConaughey Township saying, we don't want this. And I have a hard time, I mean, they're the, they're the government body as close to this as you can be. And if they say the community doesn't want this, I have a hard time saying, okay, we're going to do this anyway. And telling, if we end up having to pay people to get people to do it, telling people from, taxpayers from Emaus and Upper Milford, that you're going to foot the bill for Lower McConaughey's crossing guards. I, I think it should be handled by the community.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and that's influential to me, so.
Dr. Levinson?
All right. So if this motion is not passed, what's going to happen on 8:30? Because we just, I think we just said that, you know, they're not managing it, so they're not setting anything in motion to bring crossing guards here.
As what Mr. Fisher shared, just in terms of introducing a little background to the motion, is that we were officially notified from Mr. Biddle that the township would no longer be supporting or no longer intends to support the crossing guards for Willow Lane Elementary. We were not given a specific timeline in terms of how soon. So, but is it possible that there would not be crossing guards out there on August 30th? Mr. Fisher, correct me if I'm wrong, but potentially that's possible in terms of if the township says we, we are no longer, we are no longer accepting responsibility for this and, and supporting this program?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Champagne?
Yeah, and I would echo what you said, Dr. Barker, about, I think this is a Lower McConaughey Township, you know, requirement that, that they have seemed to suddenly back away from. On the other hand, we have been paying 50% of the, the cost, and therefore, other taxpayer dollars have already been subsidizing this in, for a number of years. So while that argument is valid, I also think that we, if we're going to think about it from the standpoint of other taxpayers' impact, it's already, it's already transpired for, you know, a number of years here. And I'm not happy with the fact that Lower McConaughey Township has backed away from this. I don't think that that is something that they've really thought through, the impact. And I don't think that they've really gone out and looked at what their residents think about this. You know, I, I find it kind of ironic that they're doing this at the last moment, right before the school year starts, to kind of put us in a difficult position, knowing that, you know, those crossing guards are a valuable resource to the community.
Thank you. Ms. Bowman?
Yeah, I agree with all of the sentiments about being put in this situation by Lower McConaughey Township. And if it wasn't so critical, I would probably be willing to vote against the motion that said Willow Lane was supposed to be a walkable school. Unfortunately, it has very busy roads where most people probably drive over the speed limit. And I can't imagine those elementary school kids walking to school without crossing guards. Regardless of how wrong the situation is, I think we need to make the crossing guards happen. And if Lower McConaughey Township is saying that they won't do it, even if their reasoning is completely wrong, as the school body, I think we need to do what we can to get those kids safely to school. So I will be supporting this motion with reservations, I suppose.
Mr. Jankowski?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with the sentiments about the township, you know, pulling the, pulling this at the last minute. But from a process standpoint, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fisher, but, you know, we, we are not binding ourselves to anything other than giving ourselves the ability to request at this time that the Lower McConaughey Township start the process for giving us the authority to have the hiring and oversight of the guards. And at the same time, we can also enter into discussions with the township, expressing our, you know, dissatisfaction with what they're doing and try to hopefully, you know, talk some sense into them. But at the same time, deserving the right to start this process so that it doesn't take longer than would be necessary if we want to go down the road. Are we not, do we not also have the option to tell them, you know what, no, we don't want to take this route? I mean, is this just giving us the ability to tell them that? Or is this?
I think this is telling them that we want to take responsibility.
Well, I thought this is giving us, giving the school district the ability to request it, not necessarily saying they have.
No, this is a request.
So this is, okay. So this is, in order for the school district to take over, there is a process, you're correct. All this does is inform them that we would like to do so. The obligation now is on the township to adopt an ordinance. They could say no. We don't, you know, they could theoretically, it's not mandatory that they say, you know, we'll pass an ordinance so that you can do it. They could say no.
But can we, can we not subsequently say, you know what, no, we, we don't, you know, we retract that request. We think that you're out of line by not continuing the 50-50 share.
Well, at the end of the day, let's keep in mind one thing. You're either going to be having crossing guards there, or you're going to provide, or you're not having crossing guards and are going to, and people are either going to be bused or walk without a crossing guard. That's, that's the ultimate end result of this. To have crossing guards there, in light of Lower McConaughey's decision, this board must pass this resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance. They could say no. We're not going to adopt an ordinance. That's within their legal rights. But nothing prohibits the school district and the township from engaging in further conversations.
And to Mr. Champagne's point, you know, we're already paying 50%. So, you know, I, and I agree with what others have said. Ms. Bowman, you know, I think it is essential that we have crossing guards at the intersections for this school. So, you know, I, I think it's important that we engage in discussions with the township in that regard, but, but I, I, I will support this motion.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, there's a couple, two, two big factors at play here for me. One has been said, and I agree with, that if we're paying for guards at a Lower McConaughey Township school, we shouldn't be subsidizing from other parts of the district to pay for that. But if we set up a scenario where we are no longer, we, we had that situation, then we are potentially also setting ourselves up for the other side of the coin to have schools start at Willow Lane in August, the end of August, and not have crossing guards there. We can, we can run the risk of, of, you know, voting this down and, and hoping that we have enough volunteers step up, but there's no guarantee that's going to happen. So I believe Ms. Bowman said that she's supporting it reluctantly, I think was the phrase. I think I'm going to be doing that as well, with the caveat that with whatever the next steps are coming from the township, or whatever, whatever it might be, you know, number one, I want to make sure we have crossing guards in place at Willow Lane. That's, that's a, a must-have. I mean, many people here tonight have walked their kids to school and have enjoyed that experience. I know I have. And I'm coming from the less well-trafficked side of Willow Lane. It's too dangerous to not have those in place. But with the next steps, we need, also need to do something about making the funding of crossing guards equitable in a way that one section, one large portion of the district is not subsidizing a benefit being held by the, the largest township in, in the district. So I'm going to support this reluctantly tonight with the expectation that those other issues, we work to remedy those at a later date. Hopefully, we can do that in conjunction, working with Lower McConaughey Township, who have, you know, generally been, you know, a very top-notch, well-run local governance. But hopefully, we can work together with them again in the future on this. But that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Ms. Winch?
Correct me if I'm wrong. I, I thought I heard at one point that this was a very, their decision about this was largely, largely financial. Am I right about that?
I think there was speculation on that, but I don't, I don't know that we have.
I can't really speak to their decision. They just made their decision.
Okay. Okay. Hypothetically, if it were largely financial, would they accept, my question back to them, would they accept the responsibility, like all the other boroughs, to have a volunteer program? And if not, maybe, I, I just think we should be doing a universal program either way. And I think we should be treating all crossing guards equitably throughout the entire district. So if we're going to be paying crossing guards in one area, it's probably good that we pay crossing guards in all areas. With that being said, I'd rather everybody be a volunteer. So that's my, I, I'm going to support this because I, I don't want to see anybody getting hit by a car on, on August 30th. But much like Mr. Smith and Ms. Bowman, I am very reluctant about this. I think this is the responsibility of the local township or borough, and I'd like to see that happen in, in a volunteer capacity for the future.
Mr. Byrd?
I just have a couple of comments. I'm pretty disappointed in the township for taking this the direction. But I think we have the area, the area caution of safety, having caution guards on Willow Lane. I drive down that road quite a bit, and there's a lot of traffic there. And I know there's some disappointment in the, in the group or the township, but I think I'm going to have to reluctantly support this because I think we have to move forward and hopefully that we can talk to the township and maybe go forward and be optimistic that something can happen. But I think we have to make sure we have guards on, on the 30th of August there, at that point.
Other comments? Dr. Munson?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking aloud and reacting to things other board members have said. I'm worried that by passing this, we lose our leverage with the Lower McConaughey Township. A number of people have rightly pointed out that we need to keep Willow Lane safe. I would point out, because I live near there, that we are already relying on volunteers who will hopefully show up to protect kids at Lincoln. And when those crossing guards don't show up, sometimes the Emaus Police Department does, paid for, not by the district, but by Emaus taxpayers. And sometimes, there's no one there. And so, so I think that, you know, when we want to err on the side of safety, we, we want to treat all schools equally. And, and if by passing this motion, we, we take the heat off of all townships to, to contribute at least something, I, I think we put ourselves and the, the, the kids at these schools in a worse position than they were before the resolution.
Mr. Smith?
One point to that real quick. While I greatly thank the Emaus Police Force for stepping in when needed, Lower McConaughey Township does not have its own police force. It's a good point to just remember, that if we don't have volunteers show up at Willow Lane, we, at Willow Lane, there is no backup option. The state police is not going to come to support crossing guard duty in the event that a volunteer does not show up. So it's just something else to consider. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to address a couple of the points. One is, it's in the, I don't know which code, but if the township and the school district can't agree on terms of payment, that the district has to pay a half. So that's not an option for the district to pay less than half or more than half if the township is, is having crossing guards. That's a requirement that if we can't agree on some other number. Two, as Dr. Munson said, I think this is the negotiation with the Lower McConaughey Township. I think if we pass this resolution, we will not get anything from, they have no impetus to do anything more. They've already said they don't want to. And if they're not going to have residents pounding on their doors saying, come on, you have to, have to continue providing these crossing guards, they will not do it. So any ideas that we're going to negotiate something different than, than Lower McConaughey spending $0 on this, if we pass this resolution, is fantasy in my minds. I, I I, I said earlier in my comments that I agree. I think these, especially the Willow Lane and the Mill Creek crossings definitely need crossing guards. But I think it's the, the township's responsibility to provide them. And I know the district has been living up to their, their end of the bargain for the seven or eight years that the crossing guards have been there. I think there's one reason why we're getting this in August, three months before, three weeks before the, the school starts, is they're trying to put maximum pressure on the school district to take this on. And that's the only reason we're getting it now instead of in, in January, when we could talk with them and negotiate something, is that they're trying to force our hands to, to take this responsibility, that it's their responsibility. So with that, that's my comments. Mr. Champagne?
Would it be possible to table this until we've had further discussions with the Lower McCunche Township? I mean, we don't have to do this tonight. I mean, is, is this something that, because I think, I won't speak for anybody else here, but I personally think, you know, they are jamming us. And they are playing, you know, kind of dirty with how the, you know, the district has have to deal with this. And they are not thinking of the safety of their, our students at all. They're putting, you know, I don't know what they're putting in front of their, in front of this. So is this something we table and, and see if there's a possibility that we talk to them and work something out? Because I, I agree that, that they're jamming us, and I, I don't like it.
Mr. Bird?
I kind of have to agree with our colleague, Mr. Champagne. I think might be a good move to table this till we have some further discussions. Because I think now, my feeling that, like you say, we're probably getting pushed into it, something that probably won't be positive on the other hand. But we could table this and have further discussions, might be a way to go.
Somebody has to move it, somebody has to second.
So if someone, someone needs to make a motion to table this?
I'd just like to make a comment, that I do think the best course of action right now is for our board to table the discussion. And, you know, we can encourage Lower McCunche Township Commissioners to look at the videotape and, and listen to our discussion and see, you know, how we've expressed our displeasure at the situation, and, and, you know, to find a way to work this out.
And also to encourage Lower McCunche residents from the area to let your school board, I'm sorry, let your township board members know whether you think this is an important activity to continue.
I'll make the motion to table this motion.
Second?
Second. A second.
Second. Third.
Any discussion? Is this still discussable? No discussion?
Oh, there's no...
No further discussion? Okay. Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please? This is on a motion to table this till a later date.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jankowski?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion is tabled.
I mentioned just, it's not about arguing, because of this, I'm aware that we may be leaving the school district in a position of not having guards. And because of that, I'd like to personally volunteer for a shift one day a week, and hopefully other board members will as well, so that we can cover, is it two streets or however many streets it is, until we settle this problem.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Moving forward to new policies, we have a second reading of new policies. I don't think there are any changes from the first reading. So I'll just open it up if there are any comments or questions from the board members on the item A, the new policies we discussed last meeting. Then moving on to first reading of an update to current policy. Mrs. Campbell or, or Dr. Povolitis?
I got it.
Would you like to...
I just wanted an opportunity to say Dr. Povolitis out loud, again.
Okay. Good evening. So we do have the, the first reading of Policy 304. With this policy draft, we are looking to align closer with PSBA's recommendation for the 304 policy, the other, all other Lehigh Valley school districts, and also neighboring counties in the area, specific to hiring administrators who may have a family member in the organization. Our policy is more restrictive than any of the other policies that we reviewed. More importantly, we'd like to make the change of the policies so we can recruit the best candidates possible while maintaining some of the current parameters that are in place. We've lost good administrative candidates in the past, and we know that others did not apply because they've had family members in the organization.
Are there any comments or questions from the, Ms. Bowman?
Thank you for the explanation, because I was kind of wondering why certain things were struck from this. This is, does this apply for, I would like to make an exception, or maybe it's inherent in the policy, just tell me legally, for, to make sure that we are ruling out issues of nepotism. For example, having a superintendent hire their spouse to be a teacher in their district or the...
I don't want my husband to teach in the district.
I know. You happen to have a husband and teacher. He's listening, yeah, like... But I, I think just, I want to make sure we're not opening ourselves up to something like that. Is, is it written so that that's not something that can happen?
That was one of my questions, too. I think it's written now that it's only immediate supervision. Is that correct?
It is. I believe the language directly supervise or evaluate. So to, to answer your question, Ms. Bowman, like, like I can certainly appreciate from the perspective of a superintendent. So if, if it is, if there's further feedback from the board in terms of feeling important that the superintendent title is put in there, but, but it doesn't currently read that, because I, I technically do not directly supervise, you know, depending on if a family member were hired, I, it's very likely that I wouldn't directly supervise them.
So the, yes, so the way this is written is exactly what they said, so directly supervise. So this provides the opportunity for, so if someone works in the district or in the organization, whether they're, you know, it work as a part of our custodial crew or a teacher, they could be, the, the family member, the immediate family member, specific to the language in this policy, could be moved to another building so that they would be directly supervised. So the language is written to make this policy practical, but also reasonable. Well, in the opinion of, of those that were involved in writing this.
I, I have no issue with the, the intent of the policy change. And I actually was, I only used superintendent because you happen to have a perfect example there. But I mostly meant that somebody would not be on a hiring committee for somebody that they're related to. So for example, a principal being on the hiring committee where somebody in their family is applying for one of the jobs. It seems like we, by making this change, and I don't even mean just principal, it could be the director of HR, it could be a number of positions in our organization. I just want to make sure that people recuse themselves of being on a hiring committee if they have a family member that is applying for a position, so it doesn't appear or have any possibility that they're influencing the hiring because they're related to the person who's interviewing.
That's, that's great feedback that we can take and potentially work for, for the updated draft.
Dr. Munson?
Yeah, first of all, I mean, I agree with that. If, if we could have explicit language that's not just about the supervisory relationship, but also the hiring process, which is, you know, a little opaque for us board members. You know, I don't know who constitutes hiring committees for different levels, but we might want to explicitly prohibit that. I mean, in general, like, I understand and support what you're trying to do here. At the same time, you know, I have to say, one of the things that I've always been struck by in my years on the board is I hear all these stories from other districts, the very districts that we're trying to sort of now emulate. And I, and I think, man, I'm glad that can't happen at East Penn, because we have this anti, this anti-nep, you know, this sort of absolute. And, and I agree with you, it's, it's pretty hardcore and absolute, and that that can be hard to work around. And so I, I still, I still have some concerns that this is a situation where we don't want to be like everyone else. But I certainly think that adding some additional protections could, could help move in the right direction.
And Dr. Povolitis, correct me if I'm wrong, I appreciate the feedback, Dr. Munson. And actually, the, the language that we added to our policy that's in bold is actually, I'm going to say more restrictive or more specific than other districts, yet gives us the ability to be as inclusive as possible and ultimately find the best candidates for positions, which are not, which, not necessarily like the, the best candidate who doesn't happen to be, have a, a family member in the organization. So I just wanted to clarify, like, the intent here is not to be exactly like every other school district. You bring up a good point in terms of, I think we, you know, certainly all hear some of those, those stories or perceived examples of nepotism, and I will say perceived examples. But our language in the revised policy, while more flexible than the orig, as it is currently, it is more restrictive than many of our, our peers.
Mr. Fisher, you wanted to say?
Yeah.
Have some comments?
So it actually was around when the original policy was drafted, which is kind of scary. And your policy in, the existing policy in many respects is far more restrictive than any other school district's policy. In one respect, it's slightly less restrictive. We're actually going to have to redefine a term that we've included in this new policy under immediate family member. Because actually, in the school code, there's a, Section 1111 actually delineates other, I'll say, family members. It's the term immediate family member. So I will work with you regarding that, because believe it or not, you can't, a, a current school board member, a candidate can't, would include, other family members would include not only those listed there, but also stepchildren, grandchildren, uncles, aunts. So I'm going, I'm going to have to beef up some language. I'll work with you on that.
Okay. Any other comments? I like Ms. Bowman's suggestions that, to look at hiring committees also. I would say I appreciate the relaxation of, I don't have any concern about a principal at Jefferson having a family member who's a teacher in Willow Lane. I think it's good for us to allow those types of arrangements. My concern is more about chain of command. I think it would put a principal in a tough spot if a teacher that they were in charge of supervising was related to the principal's boss. And even if, you know, there's not a, a conflict, I think it would put the person potentially in a bad situation. So I would like to, to expand it to, to the chain of command, so to speak, in some way, so you don't have someone supervising someone who supervises a family member either. That's all my comments. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. We'll see the updates at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Moving on to curriculum, I'll entertain a motion to approve the educational conferences listed.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Allen, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Winch?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Bird?
Aye.
Mr. Champagne?
Aye.
Mr. Jankowski?
Aye.
Dr. Levinson?
Aye.
Dr. Barker?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a report on CLIU. Ms. Bowman?
Yes, thank you. So I need to apologize. After the last IU meeting, I left to attend a family funeral and spend some time with family, and did not transfer my notes over before leaving and got back right before, well, not right before this meeting, but without enough time to even find my notes. So I am going to have to go from memory for this. And honestly, what I most remember is that the meeting was in person, and I actually tried to hit my unmute button to talk. But other than that, they did actually, interestingly, a hybrid meeting, which I won't continue, but was an interesting solution for the IU, which covers Lehigh and Carbon County. Some of the board members travel close to an hour to come to those meetings. So I think it was a nice option for them to be able to attend remotely, and then the rest of us attend, attend in person. The, the main thing was the IU reported on its golf tournament. I can tell you, it was wildly successful. I don't remember exactly how much money was raised, but everybody was very happy with the result. And then everything else was very routine, and apologize for my lack of details, otherwise.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Are there any comments or questions? Then moving forward to announcements, we had an executive session before the meeting today.
Just for legal.
We had an executive session before the meeting today to discuss legal issues. Our next regular board meeting will be Monday, August 23rd at 7:30 PM here, and hopefully livestreamed on YouTube. And I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.